Everybody's here, so we have a full quarter. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Public participation, close to in-person participation, participation via written comments. I don't believe that we have anything that has come in.
We have not received any.
So I want to skip having to read all of this for this evening.
Oh, I did receive two emails, my town email from Mike Fortin.
Oh, you wanna?
You want to address that now or?
Why don't we do, why don't we do that?
Under other business, under Article Four?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Article one, to consider the board meeting minutes of January twelve and nineteen. Public participation? We're gonna, if you're doing this as a board member, we're gonna do this under Article four.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so back to Article one. To consider the board meeting minutes of January twelve and nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Oh, for a second.
All in favor? No discussion. Article two, to consider the treasurer's warrants.
I mean, motion?
Consider a warrant.
Jason, I need a second.
I'll second.
Yep.
I'll motion.
Favoring, yep. Opposed? Article carries. Article three, to consider the town's six-month financial expenses and revenue report. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion. Do we review it?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, it's my understanding this was just to basically approve them and see if we had questions over what had transpired so far, correct? And, okay. I'm good.
Okay, Article two. Anybody else?
No.
All in favor? Opposed? Article carries. Article four, this is basically for the board members to comment. I'm gonna move that article this evening to the last item on the agenda. We have so much business here to do tonight that I'm gonna try to move things along as much as I can. And that will be the last one to be considered. So we're gonna move Article four to the last item on the agenda.
You have gym items on there too, though, you know, right?
Yep. 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 Yeah, we have quite a few items in there, but I'll try to take care of those as quickly as possible. Article five. To consider an application for abatement of property taxes for property account number five, three, four.
Yeah, so this, this is a property that was, had a tree growth claim that was submitted by the county clerk in the assessing office. So once we got their bill, obviously, we saw that the tree growth wasn't applied. So this is to basically put that property, provide the abatement for that. What is the value of the tree growth? What it reduces the value for, and it's four hundred sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents. That would be my recommendation that we approve.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve tax payment as written.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
So this was, this was, this was truly like an error on?
On the town.
On the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All in favor? Opposed? Article carries. Article six. Consider an application for abatement of property taxes for property account number two zero seven zero.
So this one here is, they were entitled to their, their homestead exemption, but it was removed. And, you know, when the assessing office comes in, they go through all of the homesteads, all of the updates and changes. So again, when they got their bill, they noticed that, you know, they didn't get the homestead exemption, but he passed away after April one. And so there was some, you can see the paperwork that's included with that. But this, this account is entitled to their homestead exemption. And would be my recommendation that we approve it.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the abatement as written.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Just, just for my own reference, like, I don't have a problem with this because I understand what happened, but, well. Why would she have gotten it even if he had passed before April first?
Like, it was taken out.
But should it have been taken out if he had passed before April first?
No, it shouldn't have been taken out.
Okay. That's okay.
Right.
Okay. I see. I just didn't understand how that worked. Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor? Opposed? Article carries. Article seven, to consider proposal by Powers Roofing and Sheet Metal for the roof replacement along the safety complex building.
So what I made, what prompted this is discussions with Gerald. Gerald's working on the budget, you know, his budget for the buildings and stuff. And, you know, we had this discussion, our plan to replace a roof on this building. Remember, we funded it, we decided to fund it half in the budget that we're in with the reserve account, and the other half in the budget that we're gonna, we're gonna get to work on, still to be approved at town meeting. So Gerald had reached out to Powers to see if they were willing to, what was their price, if they were gonna honor their price. And they came back with this proposal that they would honor the price, you know, if we would enter into an agreement right now. They have the materials for this building, and they would honor it. So it's a little bit, you know, the cart ahead of the horse, if you will. But I gotta put it before you because it's a proposal that was, that was made. So we, you know, we still as a board, you guys as a board still have, with the finance committee, still have to work on funding the other half of this project. And then it still has to pass at town meeting. So you just, you gotta be cognizant of that as you decide on this proposal.
We had, what, appropriated fifty thousand or something?
Fifty, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in the law run, we calculated that it'd be cheaper to do it in one, one big bang than it would.
Yeah.
Rather than thirds, huh?
Right.
Because Gerald's gonna tackle it in thirds. Instead of that happening.
So we should have a motion before we discuss, correct?
Yep, sorry. So I need a motion.
I'll motion that we accept it.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Yep.
Have we reached out to any other contracting firms to see if prices are better?
We'd have to ask Gerald. Around here, it's only really Powers, I think Powers Roofing that is, has the market up here. So we could ask Gerald to see if there's other, any other firms. There were the ones that just did the, over the fire, pardon? They did that one not too long ago, so.
Well, we certainly want to fulfill our, our requirement to the law as far as bidding procedure.
I, I would agree that I would like to know, like, is this the only, because I don't know anything about, you know, who does it. So, so I too would just like to know if this is actually the only company there is. And, and I also would have a question for Kevin, I guess, since he's here. It says that the town provided their own trucks for hauling roofing debris. They could credit us ninety-two hundred dollars, is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did on the, when we did the other building.
Yeah, he talked to me about it, and I said I didn't have a problem with that, as long as our trucks weren't being used. If I know ahead of time, I can make arrangements.
So we're discussing the idea of getting a second proposal here. Anybody else have any thoughts here?
So whoever made the original motion could just amend it to get a second.
I think Lori made the motion.
Just amend your motion.
Yeah.
To get a second, to get a second appraisal?
Uh, well, it doesn't, I'm not saying we have to get a second one, but I, I'd like to know who else there is, and then if we do have to put it out to bid, you know? I just want confirmation of that.
Okay.
So.
You wanna take, you wanna table it?
Yeah.
You wanna just kind of draw?
So I'll just amend my motion to table this.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I seconded, so I, I agree.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Tabled. We're, we're under no, no rush here, I mean, the?
No.
Okay. What about Article seven? Article eight, to consider a request for religious holiday displays in a town's main street park during the holidays.
So I, we got a request from Chris Cannon. So I did put a legal inquiry on that, just so you guys have, you know, because there's always discussion, separation of church and state. So I want you guys to have the information that you need to make a decision that you can make, that you're gonna be, good with, comfortable with. So you basically have, the gist of their opinion is that it's not prohibited by law. It would have to be something that if an organization or a person says they're gonna set up a manger, if you will, or whatever, for a display, for like a holiday display, that it would be theirs, and there would be signage to indicate that it's, you know, belongs to this group and maintained by this group. And that would satisfy the legal concerns that surround that. So you have that information in front of you.
And I believe from what I read, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna request a motion to discuss this further.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, so I, I read into it myself as well, and I guess it has to appear with other festive decorations as well. It can't be the only one there, but, I mean, I don't see any issues with, with allowing it.
So she's stating that she will take care of the display, the signage, and taking it down at the pre-appropriate time?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Are there gonna be, are there gonna be timeframes specified as to how long certain setups can exist there?
Well, if it follows the rules, when we take down our Christmas decorations, they would have to take down their, because it has to display with other festive decorations. So they can't put it up until we put up ours, and depending on how long.
I guess it would be just a somewhat of a formality for us to, to make sure that she's aware that these decorations have to make their way up and down at the same time that the town decorations are going up and down.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with setting a timeframe thing.
No, don't, don't misunderstand me. I, I have absolutely zero opposition to this.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't want a nativity scene there on the Fourth of July.
Right. So as long as we pick up our decorations by then, the snow is gone.
Yeah. Yep. Anybody else? Are we all in favor of allowing this to happen?
Yeah.
Opposed? Everybody's in favor? And this carries. Article nine. Update on accounts authorized users to main or MMA legal service.
So at the, this was part of an action item from our last meeting with two things, and this was one of them. To check on who had consent to access to MMA legal. So we just, I pulled MMA legal just to kind of get them to respond. They responded that the board, previous board had authorized the town manager, the finance director, and the board chairman have access to MMA legal. So we went, found the minutes on that, and that was authorized on Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand eighteen, board meeting.
So.
Sure.
Yep. Any, any motion to?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to allow all the board of selectmen, including the town manager and finance director, to contact the services when needed.
I'll second that.
We don't have a finance director, but, and then what about HR?
And, okay, so let me amend my motion to include all board of selectmen and those currently allowed to access it, which would include?
Or you are the director, you're just not permanent.
She's the finance director, so she's just not permanent.
Okay, okay. Sorry, sorry.
I don't want to take it away from who already has it, I just want to add the entire board to the list of those who have access to.
Any, anybody else? Is, I mean, I haven't gone through the whole article here, but I mean, is MMA okay with allowing anybody to, 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 to put a call through?
They generally like to have a limited number of people that are appointed by the board. So usually, the board will appoint who from the board would have authorization, but it's up to the board, I think, to decide how many people they want to have access.
I'm sorry, here, we have a motion, did we have a second?
Yes.
Did we have a second? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I have conflicting information from MMA countering what Mr. Picard is telling us. MMA told me that most communities, all elected officials to the board of selectmen have full right to call into MMA for legal advice.
All right, any, anybody else?
No, we should, okay. Questions, we should be able to call them.
So, so, so could I, could you read the motion again? To allow?
To allow all selectmen and the current town manager, finance, and chair to remain speaking to call MMA legal.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So Gary, are we gonna?
Well, I'll send, well, I, once the minutes are drafted.
Yep.
We'll send that to MMA legal, and we can make the necessary changes.
Okay. Article ten. To consider an offer for purchase restaurant equipment from the former Orchids Restaurant assets held by the town of Anawaka's U-Dag program.
So just a little update, at our last board meeting, before you guys do motions and stuff. The board had said, you know, have Jason and myself have a conversation with Linda to try to see if we can negotiate something better than that. So we did that today, this afternoon, and so we had a pretty good discussion on that, and we, Jason took some good notes. So if you want to kind of bring the board up to speed on, on the discussion?
Yeah.
So could I have a motion first before we start discussing?
I'll motion.
Second? Yep, yep. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
There's something else?
That's just for discussion.
No, I don't know. Never mind. It's like, I don't know what her motion did, like, what's the amount, or like, what's the?
Well, that's what, yeah. So we did, we definitely did have a good candid conversation today, and I think it went really well. We discussed some of the numbers, we discussed some of the items there. One of the items we discussed, discussed was the offer of twenty-five hundred dollars that she had initially made. And we compared that to the depreciation value of these items, all the way down to thirty percent, I believe it was, that we calculated it to, which came out to roughly twelve thousand five hundred that these new items would be worth at full thirty percent appreciation. So we wanted to try to talk to Linda and see if we can meet somewhere in the middle or discuss a higher value to these items. And the offer that came back was five thousand dollars for all the items. That includes all the physical items that are attached to the building, and everything that appears on the list that we have in front of us here. I would like, you know, after having some other discussions and some thoughts about it, and I crunched some numbers together. And I think what the board should, should look at is, with the fully depreciated value of these items, and the items were inspected by Gary and by Keith, who had gone in there and looked at the items, documented, and having the value that they provided, I would think the board should come up with two separate offers. I think the first offer should be seventy-five hundred dollars, everything goes. That, that includes the hood system, the fire suppression system, the heat pumps that are installed, and everything on these lists. The second option would be, if she doesn't agree to that price, there are items we can't remove from, from that building. You know, the heat pump, the fire suppression system, the hood system. And I looked at the value of all these items, and we actually have an email from Reno, who says that the heat pump, for example, is still worth a thousand dollars, as it is in its location. That's not removing it, that's not fixing any, as it is in its location, it's worth roughly one thousand dollars. And if you take into consideration the fire suppression system, the hood system, and everything, all the items that have to stay with the building, you're looking at a value well over three or four thousand dollars. So what I propose that we should, we could talk about and do is, there are a lot of things on this list that us trying to individually sell would not, would not benefit us in any way. But it could benefit her. And we do want to try to recover at least some value from the heat pump and these other things we can't remove. So I would propose that we offer her the seventy-five hundred dollars, you keep everything, or three thousand dollars, these numbers we can discuss, three thousand dollars, and we go in and we get all the big equipment that we can use, you know, there's a fryer that the rec department who cooks food can definitely use. There are some serving trays that when they do their, their lunch in the summertime for the kids, they can use for their programs. There's other departments in the town as well who could use some of this equipment, and there are restaurants in town who have shown interest in purchasing some of these larger items. And then we would also leave all the, the tables, the chairs, the utensils, the plates, anything that, you know, that, that place has the good potential of becoming a restaurant. Whether or not that's what she wants it, doesn't matter. What matters is these items have, you know, have no real worth on their own. So I would propose those two figures to the board, and maybe discuss what you guys feel about those numbers and the process.
Okay. Anybody? So the second offer there, Jace, I mean, when you talk about picking up items there, I mean, can you give us an idea of what those would be worth? I mean, even though we're probably not gonna end up selling those, I'm thinking that the town, the fire department or other rec, or somebody will end up using some of these items?
I think the money saved by some of these departments who are not purchasing these equipment because they don't have it in their budget to purchase them.
Right.
I think just the, the usage of those items in the town department is worth well more than what we could give if we just let them go for, for five thousand dollars. You know, I definitely think that seventy-five hundred dollars for all of the equipment is definitely a decent offer. And I think that, you know, the equipment is worth the time of leaving it there. We did have some discussions of, well, you know, this can be bought at three hundred dollars used on the market, that can be bought at four hundred dollars used on the market. But the deal is for seventy-five hundred dollars, she doesn't have to go hunt around to look for this equipment. She doesn't have to try to make deals in here, get the equipment brought in, and it's just, it's all yours, seventy-five hundred dollars. If there's things you don't want, you can sell them yourself and probably make back more than that seventy-five hundred dollars. Or for three thousand dollars, we'll make use in town the items that, the big ticket items that we think we can, you know, we can utilize, but we're willing to leave behind the items that are, you know, the chairs, the tables, you know, the, the things that benefit the look and style of, of that place. But, I mean, I'm, those are just numbers that I calculated. They're obviously open.
So, so, so let's assume that she, she doesn't accept that first offer.
Right.
So we would be prepared to go in there between now and when did, when did they take over the ownership?
I think they have a closing on the, on the eleven. I think they have a closing on the, on the eleventh next week.
So that means that we would have to make our way in there, we would pick up those items between now and then?
Right, yeah. And, and I think it's, I think it's doable. I mean, we've got locations that aren't being used for the wintertime that we can store some of these items. We've had offers from folks in town who are willing to help to, to get this stuff transitioned and across. So I definitely think the process of doing that is, and again, we're not taking the little, the forks, the knives, the tables, the chairs, just the big, the big ticket items that can be easily used in, in other locations.
Okay, anybody else?
I, I don't, I mean, I, when we left here, I pretty much agree that Jason and Gary could come up with something, and I would be satisfied with that, so I'm good.
You're good?
Well, so what I would then do is, I would amend my motion.
Yep.
Or, sorry, you made the motion. Would you like to amend your motion to include seventy-five hundred dollar value, everything goes, and then three thousand dollar value, and we'll, we'll list off the items that we'll say?
I will amend to what he just said.
So seventy-five hundred dollars is going to be the, the, the whole amount with, 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 everything as is, we don't go in there, we don't, we don't. And if she doesn't accept that, then it will be a three thousand dollar offer, and we will pick up the items, and we're going to list those items, I'm assuming, for her?
And, and I'm looking at it as this way, you know, what items do we keep, what was the value of those items? I'm looking at it as, three thousand dollars is less than the value of the items we're leaving behind. For example, the fire hood system, you're going to pay six grand just to get that installed, forget about the cost of getting one new or used. You know, and so that's what I'm looking at it. That three thousand dollars is basically, you're paying for the, the stuff we can't remove, and everything else we leave behind is kind of candy coated on, on top of the, the offer.
Okay. All right, do I, I need a vote to accept that, that offer of seventy-five hundred?
Can, can I, I, I can just ask a little question, it's really not about this particular, but, you know, is that the norm that you've seen, like UDAG loans, that the town, I guess, you know, the equipment depreciates, right? And so is that normal for the town to take collateral on items that'll depreciate so much like that? Because to me, this seems like it was a bad deal for us, right? And I'm not judging who did it to begin with, because you want, you know, you want a new business to come in, and you want to do what you can, but, it, it just would worry me that if that's the norm, then this could, it can keep happening and happening, and...
So, and I'm glad to ask the question, so, you know, what I'm about to say might help you guys. So the UDAG program is, is a revolving loan fund, and it, it generally provides gap financing, okay? A business who will come to the town, might have, or somebody who wants to do an expansion, or whatever the business model is, they could come to the town when we have a UDAG program to offer financing to. Oftentimes, it's, it's a, it's a supplemental to other financing that they're doing. And so it's, it's, these loans are approved in the context of, of a business and jobs, and trying to, you know, give the business a chance to make something, make a go of something. But when you're financing and there's other financiers at the table, you know, the bank is going to take the first on, on, on the buildings, okay? So that's always, that's a given. And so most often times, these UDAG loans, if they're, you know, we take a position on, we, we will take a second. And, and of course, you know, the, the loan administrator, you know, like Julie Corey, for instance, and when she comes to the board and, and she says, you know, we've done, we have this project, these people want to do this, this is a loan, we feel that we would, we would recommend approving this or not recommend approving that, and it goes before the board. And they will advise the board of, of what position they, they can take, you know, given the circumstances of that financing package that businesses is, has available. And the board makes a decision to take a second on it, or sometimes it might be that we could take a first on it. If there's no other financing involved, then we will take a first. But in this instance, you know, financing the first for, for the building was with North State, and we took collateral on the, on the equipment. And so the UDAG program is, by definition, risky lending. The town has, over the years, has had loans paid off and, and some that have defaulted, you know? And it's, it's what it is, and it's, I don't think it's any different than any other town that has a revolving loan fund. I think you're going to have some, some successes and some losses, just like the bank, you know? If that's helpful to you.
I was just curious, I mean, so...
Is it, is it common to, to, to actually look for or request collateral?
Well, you want to try to secure your...
I understand, but I mean, does it always go that way, or do you sometimes just give out a UDAG loan with no collateral?
With the exception of the lose program, we always look for collateral.
Okay.
You know, and we look for the best collateral that we can get. If we can take first on, 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 on property, then we'll take it. But if we can't, you know, then we won't. We'll take it on the equipment or, or something else. Sometimes it could be collateral on, on other assets, not necessarily the ones that are, you know, and, and sometimes with loan servicing, that happens, you know, people will, will refinance, and they'll, they'll put up other kinds of collateral, their home or land or something like that, so.
Anybody else? So we have a motion, and we have a second. Offer Linda seventy-five hundred dollars and she keeps everything, and if she doesn't accept that, the offer will be three thousand, and we'll pick up the items listed that we are going to provide her.
Right.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, article eleven. Consider the Public Works Department bid specs for the town's twenty-one, twenty-two road and streets paving project.
You want to do your motion first, or you want me to kick it off?
Yep, let's take a motion.
We make the motion to accept.
Okay, second?
Second.
Yep. Okay.
So Kevin has worked, he updated his bid spec sheet for the paving project, you have that in front of you. The way that we would advertise this is, we would advertise it, we would put the bid out two ways. We would advertise in the paper, but we would also send an email, direct email to the businesses that could bid on a project like this. And that would be primarily, you know, Northeast Paving, Formerly Lee, Soderberg, Trumbly, and...
Steelstone.
Steelstone, I can't imagine you'd come up here from Holton, but, you know, we could put it out there. So I think what works good, and I've done this in the past, is we, we do this with the, the heating oil bid that we put out, pretty much here. I email the package to all of the businesses, all at the same time. So they all see who's, who's getting the email and the bid spec. And I put a tracking on the email, so I make sure that they, they send a receipt, delivery receipt, request read, and we put a delivery receipt, so I have tracking on that. So I know that everybody's gotten the bid spec. So we advertise, plus we, we do it that way, and I think it puts, it, 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 it makes everybody aware who's gotten the bid, the bid spec, as opposed to just advertising it and coming to pick it up at the town or Public Works, and then we would all be wondering who, who picked up the bid spec or not.
So. Discussion? Who was the third company you mentioned there?
Well, the fourth was Steelstone, but they're out of Holton.
Steel?
Steelstone Industries.
Northeast, Soderberg Steel, Stone as well?
Trumbly.
Any other discussion on, on the...
Any questions for Kevin, any's?
Kevin, yeah, anything else that we need to question there, Mark? Any, any, any comments you want to have, anything you want to say?
Nope, I'm looking forward to moving this forward because we've had a lot of people with concerns that our roads are terrible or they're degrading as we speak. And this winter so far, with the freezing and thawing out of the roads, it's taken a terrible beating. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can move forward and get that started, it'll be a two-year project. We're hoping to do the backroads next year and partial in town as much as we can, and then the following year, prepare the streets with the manholes and catch basins, and then after that, finish it up. So everything specified in there, how that's going to be built out, that when they finish the first half of the project and it's been inspected, they will receive payment for that, and then when the complete project is finished, then they will receive the second half that will pay off the project.
And, and, and how, how does the inspection process work there? How do you, how do you do, how do you inspect that, or do you have somebody from the state, or how do you...
Usually it's myself, that me and myself or somebody that I designate, but most of the time, it's myself. And the inspection goes as they're doing the job to make sure that they're putting down proper thickness and, you know, that they're preparing the right way, and, you know, they're not cutting corners, the, the mix is up to temperature and all that stuff, the tack is being put down. And then after that, a lot of that will be just when it's done to make sure that water drains, you know, the crown of the road is made so the water drains out of the road into where it's supposed to go. You know, everything is up to spec, and it's not all bumpy, or, you know, there's missing pieces all the time, or there's, you know, like chunks that didn't stick or something like that.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to add a little bit to that too, if, if from a, moving aside, away from the bid spec part of it, if you guys are, unless you have more questions for him.
No. He knows what he's doing.
I think he's underpaid.
So for the project stage, so what we would do is, if the board is okay with the bid spec, we would advertise that in next week's paper. So we get the ball rolling on that. Financing, the paint, the, the financing side of this, we had talked about going out to the bond bank in the fall so we can get out of this tax year's commitment. If we incur this loan before July one, you know, we're going to incur that next payment in the next fiscal year. If we wait until November, we push off that payment one whole year, and that's sort of how we, we kind of cash flowed and turned out some loans to try to mitigate the, the increase. In order to do that, what we're going to have to do is, is do some interim financing, okay? And so there's two things that are going to happen, no matter what, we've got to do bond counsel for, for a loan like this. So we would have to, we would have to engage our attorneys. That would be paid for through the, part of the proceeds of the, of the, approved by the town, the three million dollar project. We would have to do bond counsel, and we would have to decide if we're going to do interim financing. And with interim financing, typically, we would, we would go out to bid, the bond counsel would solicit, banks be interested in, in providing interim financing. It's like a line of credit, so we take from it, you know, we would ask for up to three million dollars. We'd only take what we would need to make payments. We apply with the bond bank, that kind of works hand in hand. We work with the bond bank, when we get our bond approved and given to us, you know, or deposited, the bond bank pays off the interim financing. So there's a little bit of cost associated with bond counsel, we don't have any choice, we have to do that. And there's going to be a little bit of finance charge associated with the interim financing, but you would have finance charges if you incur that loan right away anyway. So it's almost a wash. So this would be the first step in this project, moving forward. The first step was getting the authorization, getting the, the project scope, getting it approved, getting it through the board, the town meeting, board's approved it, bid spec, we're going out to bid, and now I'm going to have to get to work on bond counsel, interim financing, getting all that ready, so there's a lot of work to be done in that regard.
Yep.
I got a question. Is there, would there be any penalties if that would be paid off early that loan? I know some loans that they don't like to see that.
The bond bank, these kind of bonds are not, you cannot call a bond or pay it off early, okay? That's, that's when it has to reach maturity. And the reason for that is because those bonds are sold on the market. And so the bond bank, what they do is they aggregate projects like these. So they'll have our project potentially, and fifteen other municipal projects, and they put all that borrowing into one package, and they sell that to investors. And the investors, when they bid on that, or they, they, there's a, they're taking that on with the expectation of a rate of return that, you know, that has to be met. So there's no way to pay that offer, call it early. The alternative to, to the bond bank would be traditional lending. We can do it through a bank, like, right now, we have one with, with Catalina Trust. Under those terms, you could pay it off early. The trade-off would be that you probably see some higher interest rates for that financing than you would at the bond bank, potentially, you know, somewhere in a percent or more.
Well, my, just my biggest concern is that, you know, we had talked about that for a fifteen-year loan. And from what I've been seeing, you know, especially this winter, will fifteen years be too far out there before we attempt to do something else? That's my, that's the concern that I have. You know, I, you know, I...
Well, the authorization that the town's board approved is for a fifteen-year term, so...
So that's, it is what it is.
Was it fifteen or ten? I thought we...
We talked about twenty, we, we brought it down to fifteen.
And that was for the, that was the very reason, we need to cut it down?
For the longevity issue of it, yeah.
And the interest rates are like one seven five right now or something? I mean, they're below two as far as I know?
I think they're down to the one, one point three seven five.
I'm just a little concerned about waiting till the fall.
While waiting, so that, and again, these are the things you can consider, is that either we could, you know, no matter what, we have to wait till after July to, to just execute the loan so we can kick that first payment off, that first annual payment into the next fiscal year. No matter what, what we do.
Right, because this year, we don't have that payment in our budget.
Right. So, but if you went with, with just going out to bid with it, to a bank, you know, and see what, what it turns up, I mean, you could always conceivably put out a bid, bid package for this and see what you could turn up for interest rates, and it might be the, the trade-off is that you might get a, a little bit of a higher percentage on the loan, but you'd have the ability to pay off early.
Right, and what's the dollar, like, sometimes a higher percentage rate in that case really doesn't cost you more. So we really have to, I, I mean, I, I like the idea of interim financing in the bond bank, but I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to shop around a little bit too. And then the spring bond bank, we're too late to look at that?
Well, the spring bond bank, we would have that, we're not too late, but we would incur that payment.
Even if, so we, even if we only got that done in April or May, or saying the payment would be due before June thirty?
Yeah. We have to wait till the next fiscal year.
That would affect this year's coming up budget?
Yeah, would affect this year's coming budget. If we did it this year before June thirty, we would have that payment in the next budget.
Well, yeah, but that might be okay, so why wouldn't we? Like, like I get that, but to me, that's kicking the can down the road, right? So, so why wouldn't we look at interest rates now, interest rates at the bank? Let's at least have that in front of us. I mean, maybe we can't finagle that into this coming budget, but I look at it as a perspective of, like, here, I was part of making this huge decision, and if I'm not going to be here next year, like, I don't want to kick that can down the road to somebody else. I'd like to at least, like, try to be a part of making this work, so...
Well, you're going to make it work, well, before, before we get carried too far here, I mean, is that not something that we can have brought up for an article for the next meeting?
It's nothing unique to act on.
Right, because it's right now, we're...
You know, it, it, this is more or less like FYI, or these are the things that we're going to be looking at.
Okay.
And so I'll, I'll have some options for you guys.
I think that's worth looking at, especially today with the interest rates where they are. Yep, all right, so, so we have a motion and a second to accept the bid process. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article twelve, to discuss and consider the town's procedure for disposing of tax-acquired property.
So this was an action item, um, to discuss. And so typically, uh, it's, it's spelled out here. This is how we kind of handle, uh, selling a tax-acquired property. The annual town meeting article that, uh, authorized the board to dispose of tax-acquired property. So I included the article there, uh, article twenty-seven for, uh, taxes and article twenty-eight for sewer. Now, you'll notice and, and there's a difference between the two in the language a little bit. Uh, article twenty-seven is different now, uh, because in a couple of years ago, the legislature passed a law that creates a separate process for selling tax-acquired property, uh, for qualifying low-income taxpayers, uh, senior low-income taxpayers. And there's a law that's, that defines how we do that under section thirty-six, uh, memorized statute subsection nine forty-three C. So our, our town meeting article does two things. It, it, it authorizes the board to dispose of the property, uh, in the best interest of the town and on terms that are deemed advisable and in the best interests of the town. Um, and it also allows for the, the property to be redeemed by the, the prior owner. So when a property goes into tax foreclosure, it becomes town property. Okay? It is essentially town property. It's an automatic thing that happens, an automatic and impending foreclosure of the lien. Uh, so at that point, the, this article basically says, well, before you put it out to bid, you gotta offer it back to the person who lost it. Um, and so that's what we do. We do, uh, we send out a notice, we call, we formalize it and, and, and a letter saying, hey, you know, the board is, is gonna be, has to do something with this property. Uh, you have a chance, thirty days, if you wanna say thirty days to redeem. And what redeem means is you pay all of the, the, uh, the taxes, the interest and the fee, the, uh, fees, uh, the lien fees, the registry fees and all that stuff. If you pay all that off, we're gonna give, we're gonna sign a quick claim deed and let you have it back. If they don't redeem the property within a period that you guys define, thirty days, forty-five days, the article, the town meeting article doesn't say anything. It's, it's silent on that. But let's say thirty days, uh, is, is what you want to, to say. And that's what we used, uh, on the, on the last one we did. Um, then at that point, we put it out to bid. It goes in the paper. You can see this is what we put out, uh, the last time. Uh, and then we open, we get bids. Uh, the board defines the terms. Minimum bid, you know, uh, you wanna deposit on that. Uh, you can add special conditions, uh, on a quick claim deed as part of the sale if you want. And, and I'll give you an example. We, um, right down here was formerly the Navoine House that was torn down. Uh, we sold that on a quick claim deed, went out to bid. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that the house was, was dilapidated and beyond repair. Uh, and the board really wanted to make sure that that property got cleaned up. So we had some legal advice that said you could put terms on that quick claim deed that says, these are terms, you know, the property is yours as a, as a high bidder. And then you shall clean up this property, remove the building and you can clean up that site by a certain period of time. If they don't meet that, uh, criteria, uh, it claws back. It comes back to the town. So those are kind of like a special condition, um, that you could put on in a quick claim deed. So that's in a nutshell. Uh, and then from there on, um, you know, the process kind of, you can see after, you know, we receive the payment, uh, you know, the buyer will work with an attorney to draft a quick claim deed. Um, that gets done, comes to the town, you sign that off, they pay, they pay the bill. The accounting system prints out a lien discharge. That gets filed with the registry and the property becomes, um, conveyed to either the prior owner if they redeem it or the highest bidder.
Yep, go ahead.
Once, uh, that a property has, has been acquired by the town, once that that's finalized, uh, I would like to see, um, something in writing as to the procedure for the bidding. Um, I, I would like a reasonable timeframe. I would like to see it posted locally so that everybody can see it. And I would like a minimum of sixty days to give people a chance to look at the property. And the reason for that is that throughout the years, many people have been accused of purchasing tax-acquired property illegally.
So do we have a process there?
No, there's no-
No.
There's no defined process here as far as the-
We do not have anything in writing.
So can we make one? I mean, can you put that into a motion and actually have one drawn up? Is that within our bounds?
Well, this article appears to me at this point as a discussion item. Um, if we wanna do an action on this thing.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Chairman?
I believe we could entertain a motion. Yeah. There's no reason why we can't.
I make a motion that once the town has acquired a quote, tax-acquired property-
Yep.
That a period of sixty days will lapse to give potential buyers or bidders opportunity to submit a bid.
So, so technically, so technically we would not be able to, 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 to do anything with that property until sixty days at last?
So you want us to post the bid and then wait sixty days?
Yes, to give everybody a fair chance. That way there's no recourse to the town, to the board of selectmen saying, well, you know, there was preference given to, uh, because personally I was not happy with the last tax-acquired property that we sold off at the last selectman meeting. Uh, but that's either here nor there.
Right. We're on the motion now.
This is just for protection-
Yep.
-for the future.
So just to be clear, cause you said wait sixty days. To be clear, we can post the bid immediately, but the bid has to be open for sixty days, is what you're saying?
Bidding period.
Bidding period would be sixty days?
Bidding period of sixty days.
So we have a, we have a motion. Once the town has acquired the property, uh, that the bidding will be opened for sixty days.
Minimum of sixty days?
Could, could-
Up to sixty days.
Can we add, so the newspaper issue, I know we're not supposed to discuss, but I don't know if you could add. The issue of only advertising in the newspaper has been a complaint for a while. I don't know what other options we would have. Does that need to be part of a procedure to, um, cause that's the complaint I get all the time. People don't read the paper.
Don't see it.
I agree.
So can we just add like and amend, amend the advertising and then we could figure out how to do it? I mean, I know we have a new thing coming that maybe that'll work.
Well, I, I think that you, you would still have to do the newspaper-
Yeah, but-
From a legal, moral perspective.
Another way to get that information out to people, I, I guess.
For further discussion at a later date.
Okay.
We, I believe that you might have that, uh, that, 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 that ability to do that.
Yeah. Soon. Okay. So we'll skip that, forget that. Then I'll, I'll second Dan's, um, motion.
All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries.
Um, could we have that as on our list of items that not only-
Action items?
Perhaps to, um, to just discuss the advertising process for, for everything really. For job, um, openings and for, I think we need to find a new avenue for some of that.
Years ago it was a simple process. Today, you have to kind of put it out there in, in, in multitude of ways. You get to everybody. All right. So we're talking what, any article twelve? Article thirteen? To discuss the board member considerations for potential business opportunities in the town of Madawaska.
That was mine for looking into some sort of a laundromat for this town. We have none. And I mean, we're gonna have a construction soon. These people will need a place to wash their clothes. Where are they gonna go? Even if they go to Fort Ken, I don't even think she's open on weekends and she closes at five. And, uh, I don't know. That would be a good business opportunity for somebody. And also I think we're in a need for a veterinarian, whether it's mobile or something, because a lot of people have to go all the way to Brewer for emergencies. Cause the existing vets around the area won't take their picks.
If you're not, if you're not a client.
We're not a client. So those are mine. I don't know where to venture off to get this info, but, uh, it's gotta be somebody out there that wants to do this.
So who do we have to, oh, okay, sorry, Lord.
Well, can I have a motion first to keep discussing this?
I make a motion.
All right.
Discussion.
Second. Okay, let's keep going.
So I, I wonder if, um, okay, so I, I'm of the viewpoint usually that, you know, the business opportunities, um, have to come from the private sector and, and it's really hard for the town with, you know, to, to drive a lot of that. Um, but there's no reason we can't, you know, be looking. Um, but the first thing that came to mind with the laundry, like you're saying, I mean, maybe we could try to give the idea to, um, to the, the businesses first. Like maybe we could talk to the inn and the hotel and the gateway. And maybe, or maybe one of them would wanna offer that service. And then if they don't want to do it, um, I, I know this might sound crazy, but it's just an idea that might trigger someone else. Um, I mean, there are washers and dryers at the school for, for uniforms, I think, or no? I, I know like Fort Ken, maybe, maybe there could be a fundraiser and the kids could, I, I don't know. I, I don't know that we're gonna-
No, I know, I know it's hard to find. It's a need. It's a definite need.
Yes, it's a definite need. Um, another one in Carol who closed and like it's just not a moneymaker. I don't know if there's a chain of that we could contact to see, but, um-
You know, I mean, um, I believe anyway that, that it becomes very difficult for the, for the town, for the municipality to get involved in trying to find a business or trying to finance a business or-
I just wonder if through our, our, we're gonna be ruling out here for our, 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 our social media platform, if we had a, um, a section there-
For me?
That would sort of, people could go to and say, you know, this, uh, uh, like, uh, we would call it, like where there's no places where we think that there's a need for businesses that don't exist right now in the area. And we could just kind of say like, hey, potential business opportunities, like, you know, there's currently, there's not, there's none of these in the area. This, this, this and this. And then people could kind of look at that and, uh, you know, and we could add to that and we can take away from it, you know, as things change. And it's something that people could kind of, so there's a place to post stuff like that.
I, I, I would tend to wanna question you about how we would go about doing that, if it could be done in that social media platform that we're working on.
Definitely could, yeah.
Could we do like a survey thing too that maybe if, like, you know, maybe if we did a survey and, and twenty people said they need a laundromat, then someone else would see that and say, oh, like, you know, there's an opportunity for me.
That's definitely possible.
Hmm. Cause I can't, I can't imagine what these people are gonna do for cloths, to wash their clothes.
My nos laundry service.
There you go. Um, I, I, I don't know how to, uh, uh, approach this other than what, to table this? I mean, I don't know.
Well, it was just for discussion. Maybe if somebody hearing us, maybe they'll wanna start.
Well, first of all, I mean, people are listening.
Yeah, hopefully somebody will start something.
Yeah, there may be a possibility there. So might, somebody might be listening and say, hey, you know, wow.
The vet is definitely an issue.
I know. I know. It's such a big issue. We're so remote here. Sad that we have that moment.
So we'll, uh, we'll leave that as it is for now.
That's all, that's all I have.
Article, um, article, article fourteen, to discuss board member considerations for FY twenty-two, town of Madawaska budget. Fiscal year twenty-two.
So I'll kind of kick it off a little bit if you don't mind. Carol, we talked to Carol today and, uh, most of the departments have turned in their, their budgets. There's still a little bit of work to do. Uh, but we'll be ready to go. I think, uh, we're gonna schedule, uh, we typically, myself and the finance director, we'll sit down with the department heads, uh, one-on-one. We'll go over their budget, uh, make sure everything's in place and we're not missing something and no errors. So we're gonna start scheduling that with our department head next week. Uh, I mean, with them one-on-one, make sure you take too long, um, to do that. And then at that point, I think we're gonna be ready to, to put something before the board. And I think we want to talk about, uh, considerations for budget moving forward and then also talk about maybe setting some budget meeting dates.
We need to move on that. So we're not at the last minute doing our budget.
Any, any other discussion here?
No, just that we should get started, uh, the sooner the better.
Sooner the better. Carol, anything else you wanna ask? Yep, good to go.
Um, I think in the next meeting, could we, um, confirm with Jessica Blalock that she is, does wanna be on the finance committee and see if, uh, the board would like to approve her or if you have someone else that, you know, if someone's listening, we're short one member, right?
Right.
Um-
Other than Jessica or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if someone else is interested. Um, Jessica, I believe will, um, be happy to do it. If, um, you know, unless someone else-
So we could put the-
And then if, I don't know, has, if two, three people step up, then I don't know what we do.
Well, at our next board meeting, we could, uh, we could have, you guys could appoint, uh, cause it's typically from the floor of the town meeting, but nobody stepped up to do it. So you guys would, would be able to appoint.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we could put that on an act, on an agenda item for the next meeting, uh, to appoint somebody. And Jessica's interested and there might be somebody else that listens, hears this and would offer up as well. You guys would be able to do that.
Be nice to get a couple.
Well, I think I'll need to pick from or we'll only one, so.
I don't know Jessica.
If, um, if more than one person wants to jump on board, their, um, the finance committee was voted on at town meeting, right? So we don't have any kind of opportunity to change the makeup of that committee or we-
No.
No. So we couldn't add to our team if we wanted to?
No.
Okay.
All right. No, no, uh, no action on this article other than what we discussed. Article fifteen. To consider union labor negotiations with the Madawaska Police Department slash New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc. Executive session recommended one MR. This is subsection four oh five, six D. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second?
All in favor of going into executive session?
I need a motion to come out of executive session. I make the motion to come out of executive room. Do I have a second? All in favor?
And so I would take a motion to table the discussion of labor negotiations to be discussed further as part of the police department budget as a whole.
We have a motion, so do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Jason. All in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry.
Can you keep the groups? Is there any budget for your office to file?
Classified.
Moving on to Article 16.
Did you want to do Article four?
Well, I was going to come in after your
Manager's report?
Yep.
Okay. So you have your manager's report that I did over the weekend and submitted to you via email today. The deputy clerk position that we advertised for. We, myself and HR director and Natalie, the clerk, we interviewed seven applicants for the open position last week over the course of two days. They were all done via Zoom. One was done by phone because we lost power and we ended up finishing that off on a cell phone conference call. And we made it, we indicated here, I worked on this over the weekend, but on Monday we made a decision to offer the position. We offered position to Roxy, not here, but Roxy Leback. She works at Shop and Save. And she's going to give a two weeks notice and she's going to start working for us in a few weeks, a couple of weeks. The sixteenth?
Sixteen.
Yeah.
So how long is it?
More, more than that. The town CDBG facades program. So working with Joelita area in NDC, she had some, sent some packets for the facade program. I went and it was sort of redundant, but I did go ahead and canvassed the main street between Sixth Ave and Sixteenth Ave. That's the project scope area. So I put out 28 program applications to interested businesses and businesses. I went up and down Main Street for the ones that I couldn't get in touch with in person. I had conversations over the phone. Or in a couple of instances, gave the applicants to like the, the applications to the tenants or the ones leasing the building from the owners and asked them to forward the applications to the person who owns the building. To assist with the applications, we offered a Zoom meeting, PowerPoint presentation for Q and A. We did that last Wednesday on, at 6:00 PM. We sent out email notices the week before, sent a reminder that morning. Only three people attended the meeting. I actually had to call people. We had a technical issue with Zoom link. Somebody was emailing me, Pat Boyer was emailing me on that and I had to send out a new link. But I ended up, when I worked on the, I have like a list of all the businesses and I have all their contact information, their email, their cell phones and whatnot. So I went through and I called quite a bit of people to get them on and I was able to get three people to attend the Zoom meeting. So which was good. It was good and informative for them. We extended the application deadline to February 12th to give people more time to prepare their applications. And we have four applications to the program up to date. We anticipate that we're going to get some more.
That's, that's impressive. Four right now that are interested.
Yep. They had their applications into us and we actually worked with them a little bit through the Zoom meeting. We had, interestingly, we had one business on one end of the project over on Mill Street in Maine. And on this end of the project, I'm not going to identify them, but who are on an intersection. And so they qualify to do whatever shows from Main Street. So if you're on an intersection, you could actually do just not just the front, but aside as well. So two of them were interested in maybe, after we explained that to them, were maybe interested in updating their application to do that. So one of them decided to leave it as is and there's another one that's modifying their, their application to do two sides. Questions on that? Our 2021 CDBG downtown revitalization grant application. So when, you know, when we first kicked off this downtown revitalization project, we had applied for $300,000 CDBG grant to, to do the project. And so we were not approved the first time. But we were, you know, told that, you know, apply next year. You have a good application, but it was kind of, you know, it gives a place mark for the following year. So the following year we applied and we were awarded sort of a split with another town. And we ended up with $100,000. And we decided to put that towards the facade program. So that CDBG grant application is funding, downtown revitalization grant under that program is funding facades. This one right here, they told us at the time, because we agreed to work with them to accept 100 rather than the three, they kind of pitched that to both us and Thomas City Banker that they would give us an opportunity to reapply soon. And so we're, we're following up on that, that promise that we're going to put in for the, another $300,000 for CDBG downtown revitalization grant. And that would be used primarily for the redevelopment of the Shop and Plaza project that we were kind of working on there. If that comes to fruition.
Yes?
Will that qualify as part of our match?
Towards the other stuff that we're applying for?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be awesome.
That's, that's the gist of it.
Okay.
The Madawaska Land Port of Entry project was awarded to J and J Construction on January 19. The contract amount was for $49,907,000. J and J Contractors was the same firm that constructed Van Buren and Callas Land Ports of Entry. I don't know who the other bidders were. I know Chimbro was a big player in on, on that one and I, I hear there was quite a difference. I don't necessarily see the, what the bids were, but I heard there was quite a difference in price between, between them and the next bidder. And I know that the project GSA was projecting that to be a $65 million project. So they're doing good at 49 million or 40, 50 million. Questions on that? Pollution control labor position. Can recall Mark, the supervisor there wanted to kind of, when Walt retired, wanted to leave that position open because of all the work that was going on there with the upgrades. He just didn't feel like he had, wasn't a good time to train and he didn't have a need for that employee at that time. So he wanted to push off that feeling of that position. And so he started that looking and I've advertised twice. We got applications the first time. We had a lot of people that withdrew their applications. So last week we interviewed one candidate. With a decision pending this week, so Mark, we took the weekend to think about it. HR, myself and Mark interviewed the candidate last week. And we wanted, decided that we're going to take the weekend to think about it. And so Mark informed me that he was comfortable with the candidate and he offered a position to candidate and then the name slips my mind, but I'll get that to you in, in an email. Recreation, any questions on that? Recreation Department vacancy. Jeff Markiev has been with us for a little while, announced his resignation to the Rec Department effective February 1. Jeff took a position with the Crystal Utilities Department. So I talked to Sam about it in light of, of what's going on right now with activities and COVID and stuff. I told him that we were going to keep that position vacant for the time being. We'll have discussions about that position in the report. Questions?
Just a quick question and you might have an answer here or not, but the Land Port of Entry, are they, are you in the loop as far as how and when they're going to start this?
The spring.
The spring.
I can't tell you exactly, well, the Land Port of Entry, I'm not so sure. They haven't really announced the start date. The bridge is going to start this spring. You know, April, May, whatever.
Yep.
And it's my understanding, they've always said all along, and if you go on the website for the project update on NDOT, NDOT is hosting the, their website on this project is, is also taking care of the Land Port of Entry as well. And they've always announced that the two projects are going to be running concurrent to each other. So I would anticipate that, you know, it might not necessarily start right when, when the the bridge starts, but it's going to be running around at the same time. I don't have a specific date for you though.
Fine. Anybody else have any questions for Gary? Okay, no action either here. Back to Article four. Other business board member updates. Do we have anybody for?
Mine was, I had received an email at the town email, one from Mr. Michael Fortin regarding snowmobile issues that he has.
Yep.
Are they allowed to travel that long on a road? Where are they going?
They're going to the trail itself. I mean, there's a trail there that, that begins right at the end of Deion Drive. And as it was explained to me by the snowmobile club, this is a temporary way for them to get to that trail till next year. And it sounds like they have permission from some of the landowners to be able to move their trails, but not, they won't happen this year, it's going to be next year or so.
Because they're not supposed to exceed more than 500 feet on the public way.
I don't really know what the distance is.
That's the state law, I looked it up today.
No, but I mean the distance, it's there now.
Well, the street itself, if they're traveling right on Deion Street, that's a good length. Where, that's just my thing is they're leaving from that end, where are they going to which other area?
You know.
I mean, we'll have the same issue as we had with the sidewalk, traveling from the, the main, the snowmobile issue we had last year with the pavilions.
You know, I, I don't know how, how much of a distance we're talking about. Is it Fongermi, Mr. Fongermi, I forget his first name there, but I mean that, I don't know that the trail goes more than 500 feet right on Deion Drive. It doesn't go all the way through, sure. There's no way that it goes in.
There is a trail that crosses Deion Drive. And if you're heading towards the Mazo Pazi End, or no, not Mazo Pazi, the blue one there.
Paramount State.
Yeah. It probably from here to Gary of the road, maybe twice that distance is where the trail crosses the road. So there is a trail there. Where are they coming onto the road, my man?
You know, and that's, that's a question that I, I don't know if I could answer that either. I mean, but really that, that section is actually, actually groomed. I'm thinking about the snowmobile club.
Right. I know that's not really our issue is what the snowmobile club does, but I have an issue with the public right of way. If it's excessive of what the state law says, excessive speed, it's dangerous. I mean, they zoom off there, they don't want to go fast, but you got people living there.
You know what?
I know they go fast on Leach, where I live, so I can just imagine on a straightaway.
I, I did, I did reach out and, and, and did advise Mr. Fortin that, that I was trying to seek more information on just how abusive some of these snowmobilers are. I did reach out to one that lives on that street and I believe he was telling me that, that he didn't have any issues. I was hoping to be able to reach out to at least one more before I reported back to the board and back to him. Just so I would have at least two or three people that I spoke to. But, but at this point, I mean, it's been just the two and I'm hoping to reach out to one more. But if you tell me that that trail is more than 500 feet on the road, I, I can't dispute that. I don't know if it is or if it isn't.
I really don't know either, I didn't go take a ride, but.
But, but certainly he has sent a letter of complaint.
Is it 500 feet or 500 yards?
Oh, Lord.
500 feet is not far.
I think it's 500 yards.
It's 1500 feet.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
1500 feet. 1500 feet.
The length of that, sorry, I'm asking a question, the length of the street?
Go ahead, Mr. Diggel.
I have spoken with Mr. Fortin on multiple occasions. I sat with Mr. Fortin again today, went to visit the site. Mr. Fortin, his primary concern is the speed. He has been in contact with the president of the Madawaska Snowmobile Club, two separate occasions. And the problem continues. and the problem continues. This morning, Mr. Fortin actually went out on the trail, uh, well, at the end of the street, and he, he signaled, hand signaled the snowmobilers to slow down, only to get flipped the bird. So he said, no, and then they zoomed right by. So we actually do have an issue there. We have a safety issue, and it needs to be addressed. Now, I don't know if it's a town responsibility, if it's a snowmobile club responsibility, law enforcement, whether it be our local police, or inland fisheries and wildlife. But this problem needs to be addressed, and it needs to be corrected.
So, so, um, Mr. Fortin's complaint is that they're going too fast?
Correct. Uh, the response from the president of the snowmobile club is that this is going to have to be self-policed. So if the self-policing isn't working, there may come a time where that trail will have to be closed.
Um, well, yep.
So I make a recommendation that we ask the police department to look into it, because I believe it might fall into their jurisdiction because it is on public road.
Right.
To just monitor it and, and, you know, give tickets if they have to do it.
Mr. Fortin certainly, uh, uh, made me aware that, that these machines are also running at odd hours, which is a big issue for him. You know, they're running at ten, ten o'clock, ten thirty at night, and that's an issue, and they're also running early in the morning. So, um, I don't know how we're going to be able to, to really, um, control that, that situation. And we're, what, at the end of January here, so we still have a good two months to deal with, uh, when it comes to snowmobiling, so. So I, I do believe that we could ask the police department, at least to, to, I don't know if they have any, uh, any, uh, like motion cameras or something that they could at least pick up what, uh, what, what's going on on that street, so, so we could actually see, you know, if there's some issues. So let's, let's try to address the police department with that, with that issue for the time being, and, and see if there's, uh, something they can do.
And his other issue is regarding snow.
Same gentleman?
Same gentleman, Mr. Fortin. Uh, he wants, it's a customary for the snowplow driver to lift his wing and adjust his sweeper when he gets to the last two houses on Dion Street. At approximately nine AM this morning, I was cutting back the snowbank between my neighbor's house and mine, when I noticed that the plow truck had stopped before getting to Mrs. Dion's driveway, heard the wing being lifted, then heard the sweeper being adjusted afterwards. He then continued down the rest of the way, pushing the snow to the driver's side of the road, referencing which side the snow had, was being pushed to. He then turned around and put his wing down and readjusted his sweeper, then plowed all the snow to the left to include the snow that he had just put in the middle of the road. Here I was wondering why the snowbank in my driveway was always bigger than what was across the street for most of the season. Now I know why. Earlier this year, I spoke to you in regards to, and this was sent to you, Gary, I believe, uh, regards to Gil Bogway putting his snow in the tur- truck turnaround. This morning, I took two pictures of Gil dumping multiple loads of snow in the truck turnaround. He's pretty good about avoiding do- doing this, but this morning, when I went outside to start cleaning my driveway, I noticed that Gil had placed a large amount of snow in the road while using a scoop to clear his driveway. When the plow truck came around five thirty-six AM, he did two passes on that side of the road, which might have made Gil angry because Gil now has a large snowbank to deal with. This is when Gil used his tractor to dump multiple loads of snow in his truck turnaround area. Includes two pictures that he took this morning of Gil dumping his snow there. By Mike Fortin. So I'm just bringing it up because he asked me to, so I don't know what's going on with snow.
I guess that would be, uh, maybe a question for Kevin, see how they actually make that turnaround. Uh, does anybody have any idea what the, how to address this? I mean, I don't, I don't have any ideas.
I've seen the trucks do all kinds of different things to manage where they put the snow so they can turn around without making a mess everywhere. So yeah, I've seen them do weird things in different places, but it's basically because they need to do that to get around and, and not leave a bunch of snow in the middle of the road when they do their turnaround. As far as other people dumping snow in other people's places or turnaround, uh, I, I hate to say it again, but I think that would be a police department issue, because we do have certain snow dumping, uh, policies in the town, or ordinances, I would say. So if it's against one of the ordinances, then I guess something should, should definitely be addressed.
I, I believe the ordinance is in place that, that they're, uh, as far as snow dumping in the roads, especially after the plow's gone by. Is, is that not correct?
It's state law.
Just a state law. So then again, it falls back on the police department to enforce.
Yeah.
So we would have to adjust the police again to, uh, to take a look at that corner.
It's a perennial, this is a perennial discussion. And there are, it's, it's, it's tough, because there are people that live on an intersection, and, and they get all of the snow dumped, and this truck comes around and, you know, and there are people that just have no place to put snow. And you have people that abuse pushing snow where they're not supposed to. I mean, we've had people, you know, the water district has to keep their hydrants open. You know, and for a while, you know, the police officers were chasing people filling in the fire hydrant, clean out spots, you know? And so there are people who, I, I, I think that we try to approach these situations with some level of diplomacy and, and understanding of its uniqueness of the situation. We do have a policy, uh, that, you know, we don't allow people to push their snow into the road or across the road, or, uh, because it's a cost to the town, uh, to take that snow away, uh, considerable one. But it's, it's tough. There is no one-size-fits-all solution for the snow issues in this town. Okay, I've come to realize that, you know, and I wish there was a, a cure-all, a magic, uh, uh, something, you know? Uh, but unfortunately, you know, sometimes there are people that take too much, and you, you allow things to, to push snow, and people that will use that and, and weigh too much and abuse it, and then it causes the town to have to put in provisions to stop that from happening. It might not be fair to other people, you know? So I've seen it. I've seen so much. I've seen people come to see me in desperation, and could you work with us? You know, God, I've got no place to put our snow, and we try to work with people. I've got other people who deliberately push their snow where they're not supposed to, and I've got other people who will come and say, you know, I've, I've, I've pictures of three people doing this, and I can't do it. And it's a really, really tough thing. I mean, it's one of the most challenging things that I, that we deal with every year, honest to God. Uh, it's winters are long, and when we have a lot of snow, we've had a couple of bad winters back, back to back. And people, that's still fresh in everybody's mind, and we've been lucky so far. We're starting to have some snow now, so I, 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 I don't know what the answer is. But, but I do know that it's, it's tough to, to come up with a one-size-fits-all approach to, to snow issues. I, I, I don't.
So, 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 so it's, it's fair to say that we're, we certainly have some other complaints every now and then? Are you hearing that just verbally, or is that coming to you and?
I mean, we get, you know, we get complaints that are fa- that are well-founded, you know? People and, and because of the policies, it's tough on people that live in certain intersections and whatnot, and I get it. It's tough. We get complaints on people that live on straightaways, and they just don't like the fact that they're getting snowbank, snow pushed onto their lawn. Well, if you live on Main Street, if you live on US Route one, and the state truck comes down through, all of that snow is coming in your driveway, and when the snowbank gets high at the road, they're going to come back with their wing, and they're going to chop that off and dump all that in your driveway, and if your mailbox is buried, you're going to lose your mailbox. And, and, and you're going to have to deal with it. And that's the state, okay? I'm not saying that's necessarily what we want to do here. I know that in, in winters when there's a lot of snow, and you have blind areas, I know that Public Works tries very hard to accommodate, you know, residents, where whenever they can, and they work wherever they can to help residents and, and businesses. But there's always a person or somebody who's going to fall back on that and say, well, you know, you did it for that one, you gotta do it for me. And then you have something that escalates to the level of the board, and then we're sitting here trying to figure out, is our policy good enough, or do we need to revise our policy? And it seems like every year, we just kind of get by with the things that we, we do on a case-by-case basis, but we don't have a, we don't have a, a really good, uh, plan. I can tell you that, uh, in, in other towns, uh, they don't allow it, like snow, and it's it, it's cut and dry. So kudos to Public Works for Kevin, uh, and, and trying to, to make it work for everybody, for, for the town, for the taxpayers, for the residents, wherever they can, but it's tough.
Yeah, Mr. Diggle?
You know, I, I have to agree with Gary that, you know, we live in snow country, and there's no, there's no policy that'll fix every situation. But outside of this particular situation, Gary, are there any other areas that you know of immediately that, that are a problem? Complaints?
No, I think it's, you know, it's been okay so far this year, but we haven't really gotten any snow yet.
Would it be possible for Kevin to go and speak with Mr. Fortin and Mr. Burgoyne? And see if they can't come to some kind of agreement? And get this behind us, and, and if they can't come to a resolution, bring it back to the board and we'll have to make some hard decisions.
How would Kevin approach this now?
Uh, some of it has to do with snow coming out of one driveway before the plow comes through. The plow comes, picks it up, and actually dumps it in the turnaround. But at times, in the process of turning around, some of it, when they're coming back, ends up in the other man's driveway, and I can understand his point and his frustration, but I think best-case scenario, if the three of them, Mr. Burgoyne, Mr. Fortin, and Kevin, set up a time, discuss their desires, and see if they can't come to an agreement, and see how that works out. Does that make sense?
That's the policy.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we, we try to do whatever we can.
I think we can all agree that that's, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a reasonable request. Let's try to do that. Okay? I know that there's, you know, some, some animosity there between neighbors and so on, it's hard to set things like this, and, but anyway, if Kevin gets in the middle of it and sees if, uh, there's something new that we can do to, to appease everybody. All right. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay, what else? Do you have anybody else?
For publicly, for other business, okay. Yes. Pertaining to the wearing of masks at meetings, uh, there are some differences of opinion, differences of interpretation, uh, but I would request, uh, legal documentation. From my inquiry, it's according to my legal counsel's interpretation, we fall under the same guidelines as restaurants, that once we have, uh, taken our seats, that the mask is no longer required, and that is verified by other boards in neighboring communities that are not wearing the masks at meetings. So all I'm asking is that at the next meeting, that we have legal documentation enforcing the wearing of masks throughout the meeting.
Sorry.
Yep.
Do you mean, do you mean you want it in? No, no, you just have to pay attention. No, I'm just kidding. Um, you mean you, you, you want it enforced, or you, you don't? You, you would rather not wear it during the meeting?
I have other issues that the mask intensifies, and if I don't have to wear the ma-
So, so, so.
If we maintain social distance, social distancing according to the mandates, six feet, we're now ten feet apart. Uh, the interpretation of one, but again, interpretations are interpretations. But I want documentation as to what the rules are, and if, if it is mandated beyond the reasonable doubt, uh, I will come in by Zoom at further meetings.
I mean, do, 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 I mean, do we have to go to the next meeting? Can we just?
I don't.
I, I tend to think that he's right, and I just wonder if, um, if someone else has that opinion, or like, do we need to wait to have a legal? Like, if we just spread out a little further, can we accommodate that? Can we? Cause, cause listen, he brings his down to talk, this might as well use, uh, sorry, no offense, but mine will not vary. Yours is down, yours was down for part of the, I mean, it, it, it's really not effective anyway, so.
Yep.
So I, I believe the mandate that covers this area is the, the mandate of wearing masks in public buildings. And I think that's what's caused, what, what causes us to have to wear them. I, for one, prefer that the board does wear masks while they're here at the meeting, and if we were to not wear masks, I would not attend the meetings. I would be through a remote, uh, session.
And the mandate for public buildings includes public grounds.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, I, that's why I had that question.
Well, let's get some legal documentation. Next, we ready for the next?
Are we all set there? Have you, have you got that covered? Okay.
Again, we, we touched earlier on, um, uh, budget season coming up. I had requested for this to be on the agenda, and I really don't know why it didn't appear on the agenda. I did submit this in writing pertaining to the selectman's stipend. Is there a valid reason why it did not appear on the budget, on, on the agenda?
Just an oversight. I mean, just an oversight from, on my part.
Certainly, the, the, the stipends were, 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 um, given to all of the board members. Um, I think, again, this is probably just an oversight.
Okay.
So, so you're concerned about the stipends as far as putting it on the agenda?
Well, well, no, no. My po- my point is this, we're coming into the budget season, and I think we're going to be looking to every department for some, uh, cuts in the budgets. And as town selectman, I think that we are obligated to lead by example, and I make a motion that the selectmen forfeit their stipend for the remaining portion of this. What do we call it? Until the next election in June. And I think we're.
So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, cancel any of the stipends paid to the board and selectmen. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Do we have any discussion?
I mean, listen, I was looking at Gary because when I first came on the board when we were doing the budget, I, I had this discussion with you, and you, you agreed, I wanted to eliminate that from the budget. And it was actually past board members who convinced me not to eliminate it from the budget because there are some expenses incurred being on the board, and we might, um, talk other people out of running for the board, so that, I, so, um, that's why I didn't pursue it, to remove it completely from the budget, or to at least cut it in half. So, um, I'm, I mean.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
No issue.
I think it's a, it's a small amount compared to the, the, to the work that we do and, and the time we spend and the expenses that are incurred, and it, it may turn others away, even though it is a very small incentive, it may turn others away from wanting to be on the board and, and serving.
Well, if it becomes an expense for them to travel back and forth, or whatever else it might, they might incur an expense to get to, to represent the town, it, it might, it might stop them from, from, from running, yeah?
Don't forget too, it's not just about the meetings, the responsibilities. the responsibilities, the meetings, outside of board meetings, the subcommittee meetings, the value recycling, the airport.
All the departments.
All the other meetings that you have, that it's a commitment of time. And the stipend basically, you know, if you add it all up, you're not, you're not really making any money. Face it. That's, that's for you guys to decide. I, I, my opinion, my opinion is, it's going to detract people from wanting to, to run for this board if there's no compensation.
That's not what the motion was, though. It was just to cut it till June, but, sorry.
Discussion, yeah?
No. As far as discouraging people from running for office, if your heart and soul isn't into the well-being of this community, don't run for selectmen. When you're running for selectmen, you're not coming here to make money. You're coming here to make serious decisions.
Anybody else? So we do the motion, we have a second. All in favor of discontinuing the stipend for the selectmen, please raise your hand. Opposed? Can I have a raise of hands again? Opposed?
Oh, stand.
Yep. So the motion is canceled. All right, what else do we have? Anybody else?
Yes.
Okay. Before you go any further, we need a motion here to go beyond the two-hour mark.
I make a motion that we go further, seeing that the last meeting, we went five hours, and I think that another 10 minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Yep, all in favor? Okay.
Okay, at the last meeting, Mr. Paul Seer submitted by way of email a letter to, addressed to the town pertaining to public participation. Again, subject to interpretation, in a discussion with legal counsel, we are of the opinion, and this would be perfectly in order with the material that Mr. Paul Seer submitted, the statute, that in order for, for this, even with the St. John Valley Live, if the public does not have the opportunity to communicate with the board during public participation, this is deemed an illegal meeting because there is no room for public participation. We have to make it available to the public in some form or manner, and as of now, we have not done that, and we have not responded to Mr. Seer.
So if I understand what we're discussing, you would want like a phone line here available so that if people were going to call in during this meeting, since this is a closed meeting, you would want them to be able to call in?
It has absolutely nothing to do with what I want. It has to do with what constitutes a legal public meeting.
Well, because of circumstances today, I, I don't know that, I mean, they're very, they're very circumstantial. What we're operating on right now is.
If you read, if you read Mr. Seer's material carefully, it is extremely well explained in his email.
Really? Yeah, yes, go ahead.
But I, but I also provided Mr. Seer with a copy of the executive action that, and actually, it's not even the, it's not even the governor's executive actions, it's actual legislation that authorizes this format for, for, for these kinds of meetings. So I, I did, I gave it to the board at the last meeting. The board had all the information. I also informed the board when Mr. Seer's email came in that I was gonna share that for public comment, because that's what he wanted. And then I went and I got the, I got the legislation, the statute that authorizes this, and I emailed it back to him, and I said, "The board's going to consider your, your, your your comment at the board meeting." But I, but I did give them that legislative the legislation that authorizes these types of meetings. I have not, and I've not heard that from him.
So you did supply him with a, a copy of that also?
I did that the same day that.
So you have gotten no other response from him? So at this point, I mean, I don't see that this is a concern, and Paul hasn't come back to us. Go ahead.
So it's not only Paul's concern, I think, I've heard it a few times, I think that the question that we could maybe get some clarification on is the interpretation of what the allowed form of communication is, because it talks about a digital format or some other format, and we're using email. And you can interpret that, that the email is good, or you can interpret it that?
I, I think we're confusing two things. Okay, the, the meeting has to be able to be viewed, and that's the live streaming part of it. The public particip, the public comment part of that, okay, is, is, I think is a different thing.
Right.
Okay, we're not talking about this, it's the same thing, but we're not really talking about the same thing. You know, what we do is we, we ask for the public comments in writing in events at the meeting, and then we read those out loud. So that's how the public participation, it, it, people get their chance to have their say, to voice their concern, it's done in writing, and then it's read out loud, and then you got to consider it. But the aspect of, of the meeting itself, it's, you know, streaming it like the way we're doing now.
Well, okay, let's just read that part again, okay, the, the part about the public being able to be involved or speak with the board, because, I mean, I, I read it just today, and, and it is, it can be subject to interpretation, and, and I'm not, I think we're fine, I just, let's just, let's just make sure, let's just clarify it so that there is no more question.
And it could be just a matter of just sending an agenda to the board, to MMA Legal and saying, "This is how we do it. This is the agenda, this is what we, we have our paragraph that talks about written comments, public participation, and how we stream the meeting, and say, "This is satisfied a legal requirement," and they'll give us, they'll give us their legal opinion.
Yeah, if email is in that list of options, if that's.
Well, I mean, email, comments to the town manager, I don't necessarily think it's just email, it could be comments in writing, it could be a phone call, and, you know, I, I jot that down and I give it to you, but.
Right, but some people's interpretation is, is that they need to be able to comment during the meeting, and that's what it, that's what we really kind of have to clarify for people.
Okay, so we'll seek legal counsel and get back to the board for the next meeting? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Daigle?
Okay, again, at our last meeting, I asked the question if I, as a selectman, I pointed out clearly from the MMA manual, the order that the town of Madawaska has selected for town government, known as the Town Selectman Manager Rule. The town selectmen are at the very apex of that pyramid, and we see there that everything else falls under the Board of Selectmen. I asked at the last meeting if I would be allowed to attend the negotiations for the police officers, as well as the Board of Appeals meeting, where at the meeting of the Board of Appeals, we have a situation there that is far from over. I have followed that case, if you will, from the very beginning, and I firmly believe that that is going to come back according to protocol on the lap of the town selectmen. I wanted to follow this very closely, and it was met with opposition. There were emails that went back and forth. Mr. Chairman, you were involved. Gary Peagard, you were involved in trying to bar me from attending.
Mr. Daigle, I, I don't remember ever sending out any emails. I don't remember anything of that nature.
I have a recording from the chief of police that I asked him if he was here at the Board of Appeals meeting to specifically keep Danny Daigle out of that meeting, and he said yes. And I have it on audio.
I don't recollect that at all.
I asked the chief, and I have it recorded, and selectmen.
Well, I don't know what, what Mr. Dubois, what, what the chief is recollecting, but I can tell you that it certainly wasn't on my comments.
Well, I asked the chief under whose direction was he sent here to the Board of Appeals meeting to keep Danny Daigle out of the meeting? I said, "Was this at the town manager's request?" And he said, "No, I had that conversation with the chairman of the board, Doug Seer." And I have it recorded on audio, and Laurie got to listen to it.
Well, I mean, I can, I, I can't question how Mr. Dubois remembers or what we had for a conversation. I mean, there was a discussion of making sure that things were, were going to be run in an orderly manner, and from what I heard, it was Mark Seer that requested that, that the police should be there. Now, again, that's all that I heard. I didn't talk to Mark directly, but that's how he got to be there. It was by the request of, of Mr. Seer, Mr. Mark Seer, not, not me. As far as I can remember.
Well, I, I honestly thought it said Board Chair, which would be Board Chair, Board of Appeals Chair, so.
Long story short, as a Board of Selectman member, if you do the research and if you check with legal counsel, you cannot prohibit a Board of Selectman member from attending any board meeting that is in any form or manner connected to the town of Madawaska. Now, if you review, Mr.
You know, Mr. Daigle, I don't think anybody put any kind of request like that on you. Nobody, nobody questioned that.
Mr. Chairman, I have the floor for now, please. If you review the last meeting's livestream, when I asked permission to be at the Board of Appeals meeting, I asked to be there perfectly silently. Now, again, you have no authority to bar me from that, and the town manager, I have it here in a form of an email, where he reaches out to the town attorney to see if we can't find a way to bar Danny Daigle from the meeting.
No, no, hold on now.
Well, I have it here. I have the floor.
Don't tee it up, don't tee it up like that.
I have the floor. Mr. Chairman, I have the floor. This is a response from the town attorney, Mr. Edmund Behr. In short, Mr. Daigle can participate in a meeting of the Board of Appeals, but he is not there as a representative of the town or the select board. He is there as a citizen, nothing more, nothing less. So I asked permission to be there as a.
Why would you ask permission? You don't, you're not representing the board. You're representing yourself, and there's no.
No, but as a Board of Selectman member, I have full right to sit in on a Board of Appeals meeting, any meeting of the town of Madawaska, a Board of Selectmen, because of the form of government that we have. And if you want to argue this out in a court of law, I am prepared.
All I'm saying is that nobody stopped you.
You had a police officer there to keep me out.
I don't believe that to be the case. As far as the, the, the information that got to me, it was only to make sure that there was no, there was no turmoil on there. Go ahead.
If I may, the email that was sent to the attorney was asking them, the one that he's holding there, okay? The public participation of it. And the public participation portion of it is the same that we have here with our board meeting. There is an opportunity to view the meeting and an opportunity to provide public comment in writing. So if you read further into, in Mr. Behr's email, he will confirm that if that's the manner that this is set forth for these proceedings under this COVID emergency, then that's the opportunity. The opportunity for you to be at the meeting would be just like any other citizen. That the email said, you are just a normal citizen, to participate, to watch it on TV, and submit your comments in writing before the meeting for the Board of Appeals chairperson to read, to read out loud.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Shea. So I, I was at that meeting covering it for the media. I was live streaming the meeting, so when I arrived, I did hear some conversation of the Board of Appeals, because of the amount of people who were involved in the issue and the size of the room, they made the decision they didn't want any public involved, especially due to the nature, they didn't want any outside influence. There happened to be a police officer in the room. How he got here, I don't know. But the message to the officer was, "We don't want any public in." I, I never at one point heard any names given. I specifically heard, "It's a closed meeting, we don't want any public here," so.
I mean, I, 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 again, don't, don't see an issue here. I, I don't see a concern here. I don't think that the board acted here against the idea that you were going to.
Mr. Chairman, I have a statement to make.
I don't believe that there's anything here at this point that you can add to the story. I mean, we've heard, we've heard it from.
I'm not going to add, but I want you to hear it from me. That because of the form of government that we are under, any Board of Selectman member has full authority to attend any meeting that has any connection to the town of Madawaska.
All right, so I'm going to end this right now. The one thing you should have done then is question Mr. Mark Seer, the Chair of the Board of Appeals, if you could attend. I mean, other than that, there's no discussion here. There's nothing here that we need to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that that's water under the bridge. I'm looking to the future. Now, you continually tell me, "Mr. Daigle, we want to work with you, but you're the one that doesn't want to work with us." Now, now, from this point on, I want to hear it from this board whether or not they will allow any board member to attend any meeting that has any connection to the town of Madawaska from this day forward. Yes or no?
I don't believe we have the authority to give you that.
Yes, you do.
No, I don't. You're going to attend here as a citizen. You don't attend here.
No, because of the form of government, look it up in your MMA handbook. The Board of Selectmen is over all other agencies, department heads, committees. Look at it well, study it, it's well explained in the MMA handbook.
The situation that we are under right now is, is, is very circumstantial. I mean, it's not, it, it's not normal, and, and it, 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 this will probably be the only time that we're going to have to deal with formats in this matter. So again, I don't feel that there's anything, any action here that, that we need to take.
No. You are in, you are an elected official. Now, it's as simple as saying, "Yes, our elected officials will have the opportunity to sit in quietly in other meetings," or you can, you can entertain it in a court of law. It's your choice, Mr. Chairman.
I will entertain one more argument.
Under normal circumstances, this not being COVID, anybody could attend these meetings. But because of COVID, we're restricted, and you're not coming in as a board member, you're coming in as Joe's citizen, and they're not allowing public.
Okay, well.
So this is the only point of contention, is, is because it's COVID. We're covered under that right now. Our hands are kind of tied, and we don't want to get caught in that, so that's the whole point.
Okay, well, we'll challenge it in a court of law. I have a couple other items quickly. Pertaining to the emails, Laurie was kind enough to print off some of the emails. I, I was given an iPad to receive the emails. It was set up that the password would be quite simple. I know nothing about that end of the business. My wife was able to get some of the emails, and then she went on to tell me that I had to do with the code and the password. I didn't talk to Natalie about it, and she said, "Yes, very possible," so. So that's why that I requested from her today, or yesterday, rather, to forward me some emails during a certain timeframe. At our last meeting, Chief of Police Ross Dubois was here, and because I voiced opposition and I voted against putting out requests or bids or whatever they call it for a new cruiser, I'm opposed to that. I was then, I am tonight, and I forever will be. Mr. Ross Dubois, and this is not the first time that a selectman is hand-delivered the agenda for the upcoming meeting by the police officers. This is not the first time. So Mr. Ross Dubois sends an email to Gary. Good morning, Gary. In reference to Selectmen Dagel's concern about reducing the mileage on the police vehicles, we have determined that hand-delivering Selectmen Dagel's agenda packet to his residence on Gyno Road is an unnecessary expense we are incurring. We will be eliminating this needless service moving forward. Thank you, Ross. I find this to be very infantile, very immature, very unprofessional. And until we can get the iPad situation rectified, I am looking to this board to order Mr. Ross Dubois or his patrolman to continue to deliver the agenda to my personal residence, and I will be more than glad to pay for the fuel.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that this board tells the police chief that he will continue to deliver by himself or a patrolman to Danny Dagel's residence until the situation with the iPad and the reception on Gyno Road can be rectified.
Do I have a second?
Do we need that, or are you going to talk to?
As a board, we can't make that motion because the direction of the board, the department heads falls under him, so as a board, we can't, we can't do that.
So you'll talk to Ross about it, or?
It's the will of this board. The consensus of the board, if that's what they want.
This board is the boss of the police department.
If you change your motion to ask the town manager to tell him, then we can go on that.
Okay, I amend my motion that this board directs the town manager to order the police chief to continue to deliver as they have been since last June, the agenda to Danny Dagel's personal residence until we can get the iPad situation rectified.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Are we ready to adjourn?
Oh, we have.
We have other business.
Oh, there's something else out there?
You're done?
I have a couple of items there.
Okay, I don't have anything else in front of me, but I know that's.
They're somewhere.
The fitness, I think they're somewhere, the fitness center.
Anyway, go ahead. Let's go ahead and deal with it.
Here, I think I got an extra.
This is a request or information from Sam?
Yeah, so did you find it?
No.
I've read it, so I'll keep it.
In your pile somewhere.
Yep. Okay.
You're going to read the article? On the first page?
On the bottom.
Other business, oh, yeah, okay. To consider request to reopen the fitness center.
So we received correspondence on this over the period that we've been closed. The most recent one was was on January 31 from Mariah Toussaint. She's requesting that we reopen the fitness center. So we've received quite a bit of inquiries to the fitness center about reopening, and people would really like to get back to that. Sam, I've asked, Sam was not able to make it here tonight. I'd asked him to come, but he had another commitment. So I asked him to kind of give me his take in an email, a little narrative about his thoughts for you guys to consider. I put that email in front of you. And it gave me today on his thoughts about opening the fitness center. So with that said, talk.
Okay. Go ahead. So I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion that we consider reopening the fitness center, but keep it closed two days a week to facilitate the separation between people going in and the cleaning crew coming in. And that would be my motion.
So the motion again would read that out of a 70-day period that you would close it down two days out of the week for cleaning?
I would consider Mondays and Thursdays, let's say, so that gives a Friday, Saturday, Sunday weekend
Yep.
to use the gym. Monday morning, the gym is closed, so that in the afternoon, the cleaning crew can go in. That adds some separation to any contamination. Not perfect, but it adds some separation. It ensures nobody's in the gym while the cleaning crew goes in there and can continue to protect themselves. Then it would be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday would be another cleaning day, and then you'd have your weekend again. And I mean, those days, maybe the cleaning crew can give us a better idea of what would work best for them, but
Right.
I think try to maintain separation between, you know what I mean, the people going in there and the cleaning crew that were kind of telling them, you have to go in there and clean this.
Which would be done by the rec department?
We would possibly ask the users to try to clean it themselves a little bit more, you know? Just be aware of your situation, that if you sweat on the machine, out of respect, clean it up.
Yep.
To try to mitigate how much cleaning needs to be done by the cleaning crew, but I think the crew that used to clean it can continue.
How did you consider that thought?
Well, I'll second it.
All right, so let's have a second.
Point of discussion.
Yep, sorry.
But no, it's fine.
Yep. So how did you come, how did you come by that decision that, what, two days out of the week would be sufficient? I mean, was this a thought, or?
It's kind of a compromise, or I'm not the professional to identify what the best timeframe would be.
Right.
If it was up to me, I would say, well, hey, we're keeping everything else closed for the protection of our employees, let's leave it closed. But I do see a need for the gym to be open. I did have conversations with some gym members, and one of the items came up today actually was, why don't you offer so-and-so gym member 20% off, 30% off their membership to make them responsible for cleaning, and you can do this with two or three. And then you'd have a sign-in sheet, sign in if, to say this, it was cleaned on this day. You know, that is an option, but then you're dealing with, well, did they do a good job? What did they miss? They actually go in or just sign, you know? So I thought, if we're going to reopen the gym, who better to clean it than the people who know how to clean it properly and have the proper tools and, you know what I mean? And then just try to maintain some separation. The ideal goal for me was probably close it three days a week to give more of a like, it's open Monday, and then, you know, close the day, you know? I came up with the conclusion that I think two days a week, we kind of separate it evenly where three-day weekend, closed, two days, closed, three-day weekend, you know?
Which I think could be a good compromise. Yes, Mr. Dagel?
I totally disagree with that for the simple reason that this is my thinking on that. You know, if you're open Monday, Tuesday, and you're closing Wednesday, well, Monday, Tuesday, you got somebody that sweats like a pig on something and doesn't clean it up, well, you know, you got Monday, Tuesday contamination, you close one day, that one day is not going to clean up any potential infection there. And my stand is that those people that are terrified of COVID at the gym stay home.
And I'm less concerned about the people who have signed waivers and say, I'm ready to go to the gym, I feel safe. I'm less worried about those people, and I'm more worried about the town staff that we're not giving an option. We're saying, that's part of your job. You've got to go clean up. Those are the people that I'm concerned about more. What happens if this employee gets sick and the recreation department, who's in charge of cleaning that, is already down one employee? So if they lose their second employee to COVID, we're not just closing the gym back, we're causing a lot of other things that these maintenance people do to shut down as well. So I, like I said, I'm more worried about the maintenance staff than anything else.
Yes, Laurie.
I originally had voted or had concerns about closing it because I was told by some gym members that other people were not following the rules. They weren't wearing a mask, they weren't cleaning up after themselves, they were, you know, so that, I mean, if people are going to agree to follow the rules, I disagree with making any kind of schedule. I think we have a message here from Sam saying that he could, he feels they could reopen. I think that should be the decision of the director of the department, what their cleaning schedule might be. We have, you know, a lot of staff members within the town that are all doing their job and are working, like the police and the ambulance and, you know, Public Works is out doing what they've got to do. Just my opinion, I think I would reopen, but I would just let Sam and his crew make their own decision about how they're going to clean or when they're going to clean, and they can put a schedule out there. Because if you pick certain days, you say you close Monday, Thursday, what if that's the only two days that, you know, the one person that really wants to go is working, or like I, I don't know, I don't think it's for me to tell them how to do their job. I'm just gonna.
I will say that I'm glad you pointed out that the members are responsible to clean up after themselves, to clean their piece of equipment, provide them everything that they need to do that, and that's part of the agreement that, you know, we don't staff that to save costs. It's an honor kind of system, and when you sign that agreement to be a member of the gym, you're going to take care of the equipment that you use. And so if there are people that aren't cleaning the equipment and we get a report of it, you know, if somebody who sees it and they have to make a complaint about it, if we can get a report of it, then we could address that user and say, you know, you really need to step up. But I think, you know, the membership, the users that have concerns about others that might not be necessarily following protocol should have an opportunity to through a complaint, and we do have a complaint box, right? And they basically put their complaint in there saying such and such person, they could be anonymous, I think, was not following protocol. And the fitness center, the staff could send a nice reminder to the user, hey, you know, you really might want to consider doing a better job cleaning up after yourself. So I think it's, we want to continue to maintain that kind of setup, but they are responsible to clean up after themselves. And I think what Jason's referring to is the more thorough cleansing of the fitness center that would take place. Try to knock down the bacterial load, you know, after a couple of days. So I think, I think that, I'm trying to remember, because we had the fogging, the fogger, the sanitization fogger that we would go in. And I can't remember how they were going in there, you know, the hours, if they were reserving some hours off, being off to be able to go in there and fog the room and let it dry out. It doesn't take that long. But I would agree that, you know, we could leave that up to them.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. To open the gym, fitness center under certain conditions that we would allow the rec to decide how and when they should actually go through a cleansing process.
How the motion is. We have to either deny this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. So, yes, so could you repeat the motion again? If you wanted to, go with two days a week?
Would be to reopen the gym, leaving it closed two days a week to, and again, the two days could be determined by the rec, but my motion was to leave it closed for two days a week to facilitate a better cleaning.
I think we're all set with the discussion. All in favor? Opposed? How many opposed?
Two.
Two, three?
I'm opposed to the two-day, I'm opposed to the two-day closure.
That's what I mean too, opposed to the two-day closure, yeah.
Well, then we need to revisit that with a different motion if we're.
So I'll make a motion that we reopen the fitness center and we allow Sam and his staff to work with Gary and figure out the best cleaning schedule where the staff will feel safe and and if they determine that it's two days a week, then that's what they determine.
Very good.
And we'll honor that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
No, hold on.
Nope, you did have, I'm sorry, I thought you were originally there, then you were all big. Go ahead.
I think the only thing we should really stipulate is that we need to make, ensure that people are following the mask mandate. Again, it's a public building, and according to the governor's orders, it's masking the whole time you're in that public building. And if they don't mask up, they, you know, they need to be told.
You're right.
Anybody else?
And I think Sam commented on that as well. There are fitness centers, fitness centers open downstate, and they do require masks.
All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, one final question.
Pertaining to?
Pertaining to seeing that other communities have opened up their town offices, is there a reason why ours is remaining closed?
Well, I'm not ready to entertain that at this moment, but we can consider that. But at this point, I want to consider the last thing that's on the agenda here, then we can go back and reconsider that.
Okay.
A lot of time. So we have one other item. To consider the replacement slash purchase of the climbing mill stair stepper for the fitness center. So do we have any information on that?
Yeah, so we have one that Sam has indicated that it's no longer in good working service, so he's got a proposal to replace that. The amount of that is $4,995. We do have a reserve account for that. The fitness center is a standalone, we call it an enterprise. And so it's not money's way through taxes, so this reserve account is generated, derived from revenues from the fitness center. But it still is a reserve account, so we would ask that if you would be inclined to link to this, to authorize, you can see the requests for authorization to withdraw from reserve funds for that amount of money.
I would.
Do I have a motion?
I would make that motion.
One second.
Any more discussion? I wish you would hear. I'd like to know more about the one that he's got in hand and how old and really.
It's pretty beat up.
It is?
The gym gets a lot of use.
It does?
It's pretty beat up. I saw it myself, and it's pretty beat up.
Do we, do we have any other discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Dagel, did you have something else?
Yes, the reopening of the town office, seeing that all other communities, everyone around us has reopened their town offices. And actually, I'd like to make a motion that we reopen our town office, maintaining proper social distancing, requiring of the masks, if that makes everybody feel safer. But there's a lot of public pressure and concern about not having the access that they would like to have with the town office. At some point in time, we do have to reopen that town office and get on with our lives. The presidential election has gone by, Biden is the president, we got to live with it. COVID has come, COVID is going. We need to get back on track, and we need to open our town office. So I make a motion that we reopen our town office.
Do I have a second?
Um, I'll second.
You got a second? Any other discussion?
Well, so I understand what Dan is saying. The other town offices are open, a lot of them are staggering staff, and I think part of our discussion was we were shorthanded to be able to stagger staff. So I, I I don't know. I'd like to hear from you guys if you have an opinion. Can we reduce hours? Can we, what can we do? Like, you know, do we?
So we're going to have, we're going to be full staff in a couple of weeks, but we're going to be training. So, you know, that's, the new person's not going to be for a little while, we're not going to be able to take the training wheels off of her, so one consideration. I think a consideration is one of. Uh, I think a consideration is, is one of continuity of services and trying to, trying to mitigate whatever, wherever we can, the risks. I understand. We could all get this somewhere else. But I think that, you know, our, our approach is always, has been to this so far that if we can mitigate the risks to the staff, uh, cause if we come down with somebody in the office, um, if somebody comes down with covid in the office, then we're, we're out of business. Okay. So, uh, I'm not gonna say that what we have is the best plan, the best approach. I don't think there is a, such a thing for what we're dealing with. Uh, it's not any easier for the staff to, 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 it's more work for the staff to do with what we're doing now than it is to have people come to the counter. It's just adds a lot more time to the, to the transactions, uh, and it's inconvenient. It's inconvenient for them, for the patrons. It's inconvenient for, for the staff as well. It is. So, um, some other counts are open. Some other counts have a better front vestibule area. It's conducive to be able to spread people out. Ours is, uh, the front of our office is very narrow and it just, it's tough. You know, we do have the barriers in place. Uh, so I don't know. I...
I mean, yeah, are we, uh, I'm sorry. Give me just a second. Are we, are we limiting the services that we offer because we're, we're a closed office? We're not limiting anything. So, so, so the concerns from the public would be what? That I can't walk into a building or can't come talk to?
It's inconvenient.
Huh?
It's inconvenient.
Inconvenient in, in that they what? Have to?
There's a lot of them that pay with cash.
All right. So that is, that, then that, that's an issue there. Now how do, what happens when they pay with cash?
And you've got the march coming in. You're gonna have people coming in with their taxes. A lot of them pay with cash. So how are you gonna do this?
So, 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 all right. So let's talk about that. How do, how do we handle a cash transaction?
Last year they weren't closed at, at that time. They were closed after the tax season. This is coming in here.
Well, we had talked about the cash transaction that we would do it through the, you know, hand it through, through the door. The window, we would count the cash. They would get it to us, count the cash or we could, in front of them.
Right.
Go do, complete the transaction, come back, give them the receipt, count the cash and they go back to them.
Three times the work.
So it's a lot of work. I, I don't disagree with that.
Mr. O'Shea?
I, I think that there's a lot of good protections of the town office. I think that I have heard a lot of people having a hard time and being worried about being able to use the services with cash and other things. I, I feel that if we're ready to open the gym, that people are gonna be buying passes. We're gonna have even more people who want all, access to town office to pay for those passes. I think it might be time to start opening it up.
Mr. Daigle?
I understand that it is a legitimate concern of a lot of people. I believe that we can reopen our town office very cautiously, uh, up until now, well, up until now. Prior to the complete closure, customers were coming in through the side entrance that I call, like the school.
Entrance?
That side entrance and they were exiting the front.
Right.
We do have the Plexiglas barriers between the customer and our employees. Both sides are wearing a mask and if there's any concern about having two people at the counter, we can easily fix that and asking people, one customer at a time, exit out the front door and just keep moving them through. But at some point in time, we have to reopen our town office and get on with life.
Anybody else?
The, the queuing of customers, I'm gonna call it the queuing of customers is, is been, uh, when we were, we had put up some, some barriers and we had put up the curtains and to try to provide for separation. But when people were coming in, the queuing was, you know, sometimes it was hard. People couldn't see inside to see whether or not they could come in and they get into the door, stand, stand at the bottom of the stairs. And so you, we get that stacking up of things. So it takes, uh, it takes, how would I say that? Two parties have to work together, right? And, and so for the staff, um, to be able to say, you know, wait there, come forward, you know, we're gonna... Sometimes people are really good with that. Sometimes not so much. And so, um, I think Matt, you're, you wanna kinda talk about your experience with the, with the front and, and how that worked?
My experience? I've had some people that they like to stay a while. So they hold on, hold to the line. Had some that wanna come in all together. I've had some that, um, they just, some that you know they've been sick and they come in anyway.
Yeah.
And they just don't believe in covid. So they decide to just come in anyway. And you know they've come in. We've had some reports of them saying, hey, this person's had it and they've been in your facility. Um, not everybody listens to the rules.
Okay. Any more discussion?
So I'll, I'll go back to say what, what I said earlier. I get it that, you know, in my household, I've got three kids. They go to school. My wife teaches. We all have an opportunity to get it summers. Uh, we also have an opportunity to catch it in the workplace. And so, you know, we've, we all try to mitigate the risk as much as we can, wherever we can. Uh, and then, and I will say that, and I'm glad you brought it up, that there were people coming in that we knew had covid and they were coming in to do their transactions earlier on. Um, and so that was kinda concerning. Um, I, I think that there are many ways to process transactions. We've been able to process every transaction that we need to. Uh, nobody's not been able to get the services that you need and granted that it takes longer. So, okay. At some point we do have to open. I don't disagree with that. Um, but I do know that if we do get it, uh, we're gonna be closed for a while. So...
Anybody else? So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of reopening the town office? Raise your hand. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Motion carries. Reopen the office. All right.
But it doesn't have to be tomorrow then, right? I mean, they can...
I think we'll, we'll take the day to figure out what we need to do.
When, when per person, I don't know.
Well, I mean, since the motion's still fresh, can we add to the motion that we open it on?
We've already voted.
On Monday, just to give it time to...
We already voted.
No, 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 no.
You want it open tomorrow? I'm just asking.
Can you change the flow and use?
Doesn't have to open tomorrow.
The doors and try to come in and see if there's people in there. Can we just have them going out the other way instead or, or, and have to be, or have to be let in?
Oh, I, I think this, 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 this issue is done.
Well, we'll, we'll figure out the, you know, the logistics of how it happens.
I do have one more thing, Doug.
Okay.
Um, okay. Um, it doesn't have to be voted on, but we, I would like to discuss it for next time. I appreciate how we're able to bring our things, you know, board things and Dan comes in and brings stuff. Um, it's, it's, you know, I had no idea he was gonna talk about the stipend. I wish we could have talked about it before. It kinda put people on the spot. It was, it's not a comfortable thing. And I very well couldn't vote against it because I had been the big mouth before that wanted to eliminate them completely. Um, I feel like if we're going to introduce something other, under other business, first off, we should be limited on our time because nobody should be making half hour speeches. Second, this other business, w- we should have an indication of what's gonna get discussed. You know, if you're gonna bring in something about the snow wheels that we wanna discuss it, then give Gary a heads up or give us a heads up so we can have the statute in front of us. Or we could have the law in front of us pertaining to the executive, to the public participation. Um, sometimes to just have stuff thrown out and nobody knew it was coming doesn't give us a chance to really give it any justice.
Well, selectmen Laurie, uh, I requested in writing several things to be on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, no, no. I'm not...
None of which appeared on the agenda.
I'm just saying all of us, like if we have something, you know, maybe we could, um...
Certainly it would help, um, I think.
And, and like if we gave you the information that would queue you to put it on the agenda too, like it would be, um, like I would have liked to know about, you know, this thing and this thing. I, you know, I, I don't know.
Just came in today.
No, no, I get it. I get it. I just...
Is it in order to request something for the next meeting's agenda at this point?
The meeting is still open.
Okay. I would like to request, uh, it's common knowledge that there's a lot of public pressure pertaining to, pertaining to, I don't wanna get in trouble here, um, adventure that involves computers, simple computers one oh one. There's a lot of questions being asked. There's a lot of uncertainties. I myself have a lot of questions and I'd just like an opportunity to, to ask those questions. And if it requires an executive session, I'm perfectly okay with that. But I, I personally, as a selectman, am not ready to move forward any more than where we are at today without having certain questions answered.
Yes. You know what? I, I'd like to discuss this today because I've had many personal attacks towards my business in videos, in public, and every time I posted an answer to these, they've been deleted and removed. And I have never had my opportunity to defend my business. It's always been brought up and put aside, brought up and put aside, brought up and put aside. And let's put this to bed today. Let's get that information out there. Let's get those questions answered. Because I have lost customers. I have lost employees. And I have lost business because of the lies, the manipulation and the untruth that has been put out about my business. Some of which are coming from board members on this board who know better and have the correct information, but refuse to acknowledge it. So let's set this to bed today and not wait for another, another meeting.
When you say you wanna set this straight, tell, well, before, before, before we get there, when you say you wanna set this straight, you wanna discuss this personal issue that you are bringing up at this moment? About your company, your business and you?
Yes.
You wanna discuss that now?
Sure. Mr. Moore, I just don't think that's town business. I'm sorry. I, I sympathize. I do sympathize with the fact that, you know, you're being targeted. Uh, but what happens outside the, our municipal operation, my opinion, okay? We have, we have vendors that work for us. They either provide a product or a service. Okay? And our concern, my opinion, okay, is that if we pay, if we, if we're buying a product or buying a service, that our concern should be, are we getting the product and service that we asked for? And are we getting it for the cost that we asked for? And the only other concern that we have, okay, is that we contend nine to nine that vendors, you have their tax information so that we contend nine to nine for the services that they provide, uh, for tax filing purposes. So I don't, it was a request made for the town to investigate the legality of, of another business. It's not our job to do that. Okay? If there, if there's a question about the legality of the business?
Are you okay to, 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 um, to the response that Mr. Freeguard is giving you for the time now?
No, because I, I believe that if somebody on the board is concerned about the legitimacy of a business and has put it out there to multiple forums, that I deserve to defend and provide the correct information to Mr. Daigle that the business is a legitimate business.
I think we, we can, we can do that outside of, uh, a board meeting.
I, I will add one thing though. Okay? And I, I stand by what I say. But I also say that in the context that the pressure is being put on him because he's, because of his position to make decisions on this board, okay, is a concern for this board. That's, that's what I think the concern, that this board should have about the concern. Not necessarily about the filing status or whether or not a business is, is in Uganda or whatever. We have, we have the ten nine nine on record. Okay? We have, excuse me, we have, we have a W two on record. So we can ten nine nine.
W nine.
Uh, the W nine, sorry. And and we're gonna get a product or the service that we're gonna, we're gonna vet, okay? And, 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 and hope, we're gonna basically hold the vendor to the word that we're gonna get a, a service and product that we want. And we're gonna pay for that service. Okay? That's, that's what we've done so far.
Yes, Laurie.
I understand Gary's point. Um, but I have to say that one of the questions that's being risen is whether this board went into basically an illegal transaction or, or signed off on, um, a contract with a vendor that, um, it wasn't legitimate. And Dan feels we should cancel, uh, the service and not continue with the project. Um, that's not fair to Jason. Uh, he needs to be able to speak. I don't care if it's, if somebody thinks this is private business. The board has been brought into this. The town's being brought into this. Um, there are words out there being used like that we have a board member that's committed a felony. I'm sorry. Whether it's town business or not, I think Jason has a right to speak.
Okay, Jason. I'll give you some more.
I'm past, uh, we're with Mr. Daigle here to ask his questions that he has for the legitimacy of the transaction to town forum.
Mr. Daigle, try to make this brief.
It'll be extremely brief, Mr. Chairman. I requested that it be put on the next meeting's agenda. Uh, I am not prepared tonight to ask all of the questions that I need to ask. It's, it's very simple. I'm not prepared tonight to, to address this.
Then it's not gonna get addressed. Tonight is the night. You have to ask your question. I'd like to present this to the board here. This is the official documentation of my business back in two thousand and four, registering with the town of Madawaska to do business in the town of Madawaska. It's also the letter that was sent to the neighbors at the time with all my intent that I had to provide service to the town of Madawaska. I also have letters here from the previous two town managers, Christina and Ryan, saying that my company, before I was a member of the board, had provided plenty of computer and electronic services to the town of Madawaska during their time as members. I've also got my tax filings here with the state of Maine, all the way back from two thousand and five, excuse me, two thousand and six is the copy I have here, where I, my business was legitimately filing taxes. So the legitimacy of my business being able to do business with the town of Madawaska is all contained in this folder here, which you can ask for a Freedom of Information Act and get all this information and pass it on to your, your friends and family. My business is legitimate in town. Now, there was also an accusation of me committing a felony by illegally stating that I, somebody else was getting...
Please address the board, Mr. Daigle.
Sorry. That somebody else was doing the work. Um, I have actually shown other men, board members on this board, the ten nine nine, which I did not have to do, that I, as a business owner, provided to the employer, to the employee, excuse me, who is doing the work on this application. All expenses have been tracked properly and reported to the state when taxes had to be filed because this ten nine nine had to be filed. So unless you have any other questions or concerns or requests, then I would not entertain discussing this again at another board meeting.
You are prepared to provide that information?
Yes. It's all right here in the, in the folder.
Will that suffice to your questions, Mr. Daigle?
Wanna make it perfectly clear that I am not the one that brought forth the accusations. I want that to be perfectly clear. But as a representative of the taxpayers that are asking the questions, I feel a responsibility to give an answer to their questions. Secondly, uh, I have questions that did come up in my mind. If we are interested and if we are looking to establish, let's say, this service that we're looking into... to establish, let's say, this service that we're looking into, I also believe that this needs to go out on bid, that we're not to give this out to the first person that comes our way. That if that is our venture, that we are required to look if we can get an identical service.
Before you go too far with this, I mean, the issue here this evening is, or this issue that we're discussing is the issue about Mr. Bush's business and you have questions about his legitimacy. So he is providing you that information. Is that enough for you at this point to end this discussion?
Has he filed a 706 for personal property tax with the town?
Mr. Chair, can we, this is gonna go on, obviously, for a long time.
Well, that's why, Mr. Peacock, that's why that I requested that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting. So does that make sense or does it not?
I am, again, with the belief that he is providing you with the information that you are looking for. He's made it available to you.
No, Mr. Chairman, I just informed you that I am.
Mr. Daigle, please.
No, I have the floor.
Mr. Daigle.
No, I have the floor.
Mr. Daigle.
I have the floor.
Mr. Daigle, I am the chair.
I asked, I asked to put this on next meeting's agenda because I am not prepared.
Can we adjourn this meeting now? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, can I have a motion to have a second? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.